Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 3, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting. Is Reverend Rodney Cully in the audience? Reverend Cully's been kind enough to give us the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance if we could all stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to be together in your presence. We thank you for how you take care of us in every area of our lives, and for this we give you glory. And as we begin this meeting, Father God, we thank you for each and every man and woman who serves this county and serves you, Father God. We ask you to continue to bless them and empower them, give them your wisdom and knowledge to make the decisions that will be beneficial to them and be beneficial to our constituents, and most importantly, they will give you glory, take care of their families, everything that they're concerned about, Father God, when they talk to you about it, Father God. Not only answer them and not only hear them, but give them victory and success. And we pray that same prayer for the constituents of Currituck County. We thank you for blessing us in everything that we endeavor to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Cully. May it be seen. Our first item this evening is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, under the new business board appointments, number five, the Senior Center Advisory Board.
So moved.
And then, we do have a resolution that we need to add.
I have one resolution to add to the consent agenda, which would be item number eight, resolution requesting opposition to repeal plastic bag ban by retail establishments on the Outer Banks.
With that, I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second that. Call in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The next amendment would be to remove the public hearing, item A, PB 16-14, Blue Water Development Corp. The application was withdrawn.
Motion for approval with that also?
Motion for approval, yes. Thank you. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any more changes to the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda. Call in favor?
Aye.
Don't confuse me. We're making sure it got approved. The next item is public comments, and I have on the list Roxy Darling.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Roxy Darling. The committee and I are here tonight representing the Water Lily Protection Association, a group of concerned residents, friends, and visitors to our island that was formed barely five weeks ago after learning of the pending sale of Hampton Lodge Campground. Our group would like to recognize and thank the planning staff and the planning board for their unanimous denial of the text amendment requested by Blue Water Development. The planning board members spent many hours listening to our concerns and visiting our community to see how this could affect our way of life and our crumbling cottage road. Finally, we would like to thank all of our Commissioners who also listened to our concerns and responded to our many phone calls and emails. We all appreciate the time that you have taken to familiarize yourselves with our island and how our community would have been changed forever if this text amendment had not been withdrawn. Going forward, we will all stay vigilant and keep the best interest of our small community in mind. We all thank you very much.
Thank you, Roxy. Moving on to administrative reports. Is there anyone else here for public comments? That didn't sign up?
Yes, sir. I didn't sign up, but I would like to talk.
You're welcome to come up, sir.
I've been on the island for a lot of years. And I didn't sign up, but I'd like to talk.
Okay, come on up. If you would state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my address is 1181 Water Lily Road. And my name is Limbo Alkin. And, man, right next door to me, I live at 1181. 1171 is, it's almost caved in. And school buses, I don't know how they're gonna keep coming up down the road. I talked to DOC today up there, I got into an argument with him today up there. The barbecue barn about, he said it was contracted out to somebody else. It's her responsibility to keep the road up. How can they contract it up to somebody else? He said they contracted up to somebody else, and it's caving in. Me and my dad did a good job down there because we got stones up there, we got, we put pilings in, we put dot work in to make it last. And the rest of the people evidently have not done that because it's not holding up. What I'm saying is, somebody's gonna get hurt down there again. The road's gonna cave in. And Mr. O'Neill's done such a good job, tried to stay behind it, and I respect him. We grew up together. But we've been neglected because we're off the road five miles. You go down there around Miss Doc Jones's dock, the water comes across the road every storm because it's so low. I don't know what the answer is, but what they're trying to do, well, it's gonna deteriorate everybody's future on that island. All I want to do is lift something for my grandkids. That road's gonna cave in. You know, I just don't, I'm against the amendment to improve that campground. So I want to keep it like it was another kid, all weekends and weekly. And I'm asking Mr. Buma, because he might be before, to go against this amendment.
Sir.
And Miss Gilbert. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. And Mr. Scalen, do we have a contract or we are aware of a contract with the DOT to make improvements to Water Lily Road?
I think DOT has a contract that they've let to do some road work on Water Lily Road, yes. It is a DOT responsibility, but they don't actually undertake the work itself, they contract the work out. And so there is a contract out to do some road improvements on Water Lily Road.
Would you reach out to them and see where we are on, or where they are on those improvements?
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to say thank you. I've been on the board seven years, and I have had more US Postal Mail on this one item than I've had in my entire tenure on the board. So I just want to thank those of you that took that extra effort, the emails, the phone calls, so just thank you for those efforts. And just, I felt very popular, and as my other colleagues also, so I just wanted to thank you for the efforts.
Can I say one more thing before you close?
That's up to the chairman, but I just wanted to
Yes, sir, you may.
Echo thank you to you guys.
Can I say one more thing?
If you can make it quick, please.
Yes, sir. I can make it real quick. Right down that road, and take that turn when you come off Miss Hooper's and go on down where Miss Doc used to live, where the water comes in real quick, and take that and look at that, and you come on down, you've got, you've got signs up all over the road where it's been washed out. And there's, I thought the state was supposed to take care of that. That's what I asked him about this morning. He said he got, he's contracted out to somebody else. The state's responsible for that road because the kids are school buses.
Well, we do have our county manager that's gonna check into that for us, so thank you for bringing that back to our attention.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that didn't sign up for public comments? Without any closing, public comments. Moving on to administrative reports. Mr. Battle Betts, the Director of Albemarle Regional Health Services, is here to give us a report.
Good evening. I'm Battle Betts with Albemarle Regional Health Services, and I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you this evening. ARHS will be celebrating 75 years of providing public health services for our region in 2017. We're planning numerous marketing and educational outreach activities throughout the year. And looking through our historical archives, we found resolutions of support from our member counties celebrating 25 years of service and 50 years of service to our communities. We're hoping to do our part to preserve this 75th anniversary as part of our long history. Currituck County joined the district in 1999, and will have been a part of us for 18 years as of July 1 of this year. I'd also like to introduce you to Terry Hennig, our county nurse supervisor for Currituck County. In our district service model, we don't have seven health directors, so we rely heavily on our county nurse supervisors to provide guidance to staff at each of the county health department locations. Terry's been with ARHS for about 22 years now, 16 of which she has held her supervisor responsibilities. I'd also like to take this time to thank Commissioner Payment for his service to our board. We're looking forward to working with you to assure the public health and safety of the communities that we serve. And I'd like to thank all of you for your consideration of our resolution of support that's a little bit later on your agenda this evening, and for having us here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next report will be Dr. Landon Mason, Executive Director of Economic Improvement Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, board members of the Currituck County Commissioners, county manager, and of course, the administrative support team. My name is Dr. Landon Mason. I am humbled to serve in the capacity of the Executive Director for the Economic Improvement Council that's located in Edington, North Carolina, where we serve 13 counties in northeast North Carolina, and Currituck County, of course, being one of the counties. Mr. Abbott was the third, our board president, and that 21-member board sends their regards to this great Board of Commissioners. In response to the clarion call in 1964 of former President Lyndon B. Johnson, he launched this whole initiative of Wage War on Poverty. And here it is, 2017, and we're still dealing with this growing phenomenon of poverty located within our region, and in particular, here in Currituck County. Mr. Chairman, again, let me say thank you so much for the space and time that we'll be able to share, in my estimation, some exciting news that will be very enriching, enlightening, and ultimately edifying as we share information as how we have made a major impact here in this county of Currituck. Of course, the mission statement of EIC, and I will not be long, my presentation is relatively short, but I'm really excited about this work. I'm really honored to serve those that, for some reason, have been disenfranchised economically. And so, having said that, our mission statement is that we want to promote the social, physical, and economic well-being of all of our customers by providing quality services to assist low-income people to become more self-sufficient. Our agency consists of four programs. We have a Head Start program, which serves children three to five, to give them a head start on their educational journey. We have a Community Services Block Grant program, where we partner with citizens here in Currituck to help them and to support them in becoming self-sufficient. And then, of course, we have a Section Eight, whether it's, Section Eight Housing Voucher Program, where we, of course, are there to ensure that the citizens here in Currituck can increase their quality of lives. And then lastly, we have a weatherization program, and that sole purpose is to reduce the energy costs by improving the efficiency of our homes. And what our weatherization program does, it literally, it decrease, after we go in, you see a decrease in the actual electric bills, anywhere between $200 and $300. We go in, we air seal the home, we insulate the home, and then, of course, we do a health and safety check in the home. These services perhaps could run anywhere between $2,000 to $5,000 at no cost to the homeowner. And so, out of the citizens that we serve, that Census Data Access NC 2014 gives us more than 24,000 citizens that live in Currituck County. And that report shows us about 2,477 people that live in poverty. That's close to 10% of your population here in Currituck is living in poverty. And so, as we look at the fiscal year 2015, 2016, I'm honored to announce that the EIC, Economic Improvement Council, with those four programs, have spent over $1.1 million serving 161 customers here in the county of Currituck. When I look at the data, the data is so powerful, it's so alarming, in that out of the 161 families that we serve here in Currituck, Section Eight, of course, served 77% of those families. Our Head Start served 18% of those families. Our CSBG program served 4% of those families. And then, of course, our weatherization served 1% of those families. The average customer dollars spent here in Currituck was a little over $16,000 per customer. And when you add that up, the total annual dollar spent, again, 1.1, 1.1 million, 135,172 dollars. The Section Eight Housing Program has 75% of that. The Head Start Program, of course, 22% of that. The CSBG Program, 2%, and then, Weatherization, 1% of those dollars spent. And in finality, I just want to announce that EIC, the Economic Improvement Council, we are intentional about empowering low-income families to become more self-sufficient, where they can come back into the county and literally be of great support. Not just serving, not just serving the citizens, but when you look at our Section Eight program, every dollar that's spent in Currituck, not only do we empower the family, we also empower the local contractors, the local vendors, because those particular homeowners, when their repairs needed, then, of course, they have to contract those services out, and then there's money, of course, coming back into the county to help its economics. So it's more to it than just literally empowering individuals. It's so mega that there are so many other entities that are affected by the service that we give here to the great citizens here in Currituck County. I close with this premise, the former President Abraham Lincoln, he said something that really arrests my attention, and it resonates my universal meaning. He says this, he says, and I quote, "He has a right to criticize who have a heart to help." And so that embodies my universal meaning. Thank you so much for this space and time and sharing, and I hope that my coming this evening, I did not want to come and just, just come in need. I wanted to come to let you know how much we are appreciative of the work that you're doing, and of course, the support that we're giving you in your work as we serve collectively the citizens here in Currituck County. If there are any questions, comments, concerns, observations, Mr. Chair, I'd be more than glad to receive those if there are any.
Dr. Mason, I just want to comment. Chairman Hennig and I attended the ribbon cutting at the Child Center, and that was a very memorable event, and I'm ecstatic that we're operating and moving forward. So thank you for your efforts for that, and that was, that was an impressionable day.
If I could just add to that, the staff that was there, and I know they weren't all there involved at the school, but everyone that came, you see the enthusiasm?
Yes, sir.
And the real love for what they're doing, and it's commendable. You know, y'all have an amazing job out there to do, and we appreciate you taking care of our kids.
And let me say again, I knew Miss Gilbert, I saw your face, Mr. Chairman, I saw your face there at the ribbon cutting ceremony, and I see so many people. I also serve on the Region Four Board that consists of eight states for Head Start, and then I'm on the North Carolina Community Action Association Board that stretches all the way from the east to the west coast of the state. And so, and seeing so many people, when I saw Miss Gilbert and I saw the chairman, I said, "I seen them somewhere." And I want to say publicly, thank you so much for responding to the call. It makes us, it really, you know, helps us to know that we do have elected officials that are really, really concerned about the cause of our communities. And I know the rest of the Commissioners would have been there, but you did have representation. And again, I can't say enough how humble and how appreciative we really are for the support that you give us here in Currituck. Thank you very kindly.
You're very welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Moving on to the next administrative report. Kim Lee Horn and Associates are going to give us a presentation on the Moyoc Megasite update.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the board, thanks for having us here tonight. I'm Carol Collins with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, 11815 Fountain Lake, Newport News, Virginia, and also have Sal Masara with me this evening. Just gonna go briefly through the Moyoc Megasite Master Plan, sort of a status update, where we've been, sort of where we are in the next steps. A little bit about the background, as far as the megasite is concerned, talk through some of the study recommendations, next steps, key elements of the plan, approach and program development as it relates to the Moyoc Megasite itself, some graphics renderings reflecting the master plan, some changes to the UDO that's better proposed, we'll keep that at high level tonight, and then some master plan next steps. Boundary of the megasite itself, to the north, you have the Virginia-North Carolina line, south, South Mills Road, to the east is North Carolina 168, and southwest is primarily some property boundaries and Backwoods Road. So we did the market feasibility study, and we pretty much wrapped up that effort about a year ago, and some of the considerations there, one of the next steps was to create a vision, coming out of the market feasibility study, to create, you know, for the master site itself, and to create that vision through the master planning process, keeping in mind the need for flexibility and protection of prime acreage. Also with that was diversifying the residential product that's in place today, because we've talked before, basically about 90% homeownership in and around the county, so there's a need there to, you know, introduce some rental opportunities, if it's townhomes, condominiums, apartments, so on and so forth. As we move forward, to develop a branding or marketing campaign for the site and the various uses that are there, getting into potential incentives to begin, attract more attention about the site, attract more developers to the megasite itself, create shovel-ready development opportunities, and understanding the project is for the long term, it's a 25 to 30-year horizon, but to be patient and persistent along the way. With that, we've had a pretty consistent, community-based outreach process, property owners, residents in and around the Moyoc area, getting them involved, even developers that have some conceptual plans at various stages, and even providing us input along the way as we've came out of the market feasibility study, and even putting together some preliminary concepts for the master plan itself. And then, keeping in mind that it is a market-driven plan. The intent of the feasibility study was to sort of validate what the demand could be within the Hampton Roads region, and from that, we identified some land uses, some potential densities associated with particular types of residential products, as well as office development, to include both just general office and medical, some retail commercial opportunities. And one of the other things, as we looked at the intent of economic development, increasing the tax base, was industrial warehouse distribution and maybe even light industrial. With that, I want to turn over the, sort of the next steps as it relates to, you know, the land use plan itself and the component of the development potential as it relates to the plan.
Thank you, Carol. Good evening. Sal Masara with Kim Lee Horn. We'll go through this pretty quickly, but essentially, as Carol alluded to, we took the results from the market feasibility study, which dictated or indicated a potential demand by land use, and then we began to see how we could apply that to the master plan, to the site. And so, for example, if the demand came out of that study for a certain amount of square footage of product, we then converted that into an acreage, and then said, "Where can we put that on the plan? How much can the land that we have available to us support the ultimate demand?" And so, in the meetings here, the time we spent here with the community, we had great input, it was very positive, a lot of consistent thinking in terms of what the community wanted to see out of the plan. And there are local landowners that already have given thought to what they would do with their property, and they were kind enough to share those plans with us in terms of concepts and ideas they had. In some cases, those ideas have been advanced into conversations with actual potential end-users. And so, we wanted to incorporate that into the master plan as much as possible so that we were responding and respecting kind of what the thought was in the marketplace for existing landowners. So we went through that process, we took the physical site characteristics into account. There are certainly some undevelopable land areas within the project study area that are challenging, we have to work around. So there's some physical constraints. And then we also looked at regional trends in terms of just general community development trends we're seeing across the country, because we do projects around the country. And there are some regional transportation initiatives that also impact the property, so that we worked internally and with DOT to look at the potential bypass route and potential east-west connector which goes through the property to see how it might impact the land plan. Employment center job creation certainly has been one of the primary objectives and the goals for this plan, and it's certainly very important. We need to attract jobs, we need to attract businesses to this site. In addition, in a mixed-use environment where you have housing, you have business, it's really a goal to keep our young people in these communities. They grow up here, they love it here, they go off to get educated, and then they leave to go to markets where they, maybe they think they have better opportunities or different options in terms of living environments. So one of the goals is, let's keep, keep our, keep our young people here, and so they don't feel like they have to actually leave to go have the kind of life they want to have. The live, work, play environment is something that we see from our younger generation and our seniors as well. They want the same kind of things in a livable, live, work, play environment. It's driving a lot of development today. And certainly, if we do a good job attracting the kind of businesses we're looking at, that we can grow the tax base here, which is certainly critical to the success of the project. In some cases, those ideas have been advanced into conversations with actual potential end users. And so we wanted to incorporate that into the master plan as much as possible so that we were responding and respecting kind of what the thought was in the marketplace for existing landowners. So we went through that process, we took the physical site characteristics into account. There are certainly some undevelopable land areas within the project study area that are challenging, we have to work around. So there's some physical constraints. And then we also looked at regional trends in terms of just general community development trends we're seeing across the country because we do projects around the country. And there are some regional transportation initiatives that also impact the property so that we worked internally and with DOT to look at the potential bypass route and potential east-west connector which goes through the property to see how it might impact the land plan. Employment center job creation certainly has been one of the primary objectives and the goals for this plan and it's certainly very important. We need to attract jobs, we need to attract businesses to this site. In addition, in a mixed-use environment where you have housing, you have business, it's really a goal to keep our young people in these communities. They grow up here, they love it here, they go off to get educated and then they leave to go to markets where they, maybe they think they have better opportunities or different options in terms of, of living environments. So one of the goals is let's keep, keep our, keep our young people here and so they don't feel like they have to actually leave to go have the kind of life they want to have. The live, work, play environment is something that we see from our younger generation and our seniors as well. They want the same kind of things in a livable, live, work, play environment. It's driving a lot of development today. And certainly if we do a good job attracting the kind of businesses we're looking at, that we can grow the tax base here, which is certainly critical to the success of the project. Then again, something pedestrian-friendly and something that becomes a destination perhaps for the local community, perhaps even on a regional basis. There's enough land and the location is, is really good enough that it could be a destination beyond just a local destination. So this is a graphic of the, of the plan as it is today. Again, the lines should be looked at as things that are guidance, they're, they're not totally etched in stone, but they do suggest some important organization of land uses. Real high level, the area along the 168 corridor is more susceptible to, to really seeing and being able to accommodate commercial uses, perhaps office uses that need visibility, that need good access. And the other thing that's important about that corridor is that the infrastructure is either there or relatively close, so it's less expensive to develop that land, which means you can have some early success in attracting development as opposed to being deeper into the project to the west where you have to build roads and utilities and the costs are more extensive. So again, as Carol said, this is a long-term proposition, so the likelihoods of development would go from the corridor on the east and work toward the west would be the most likely scenario. There are some light purple areas on the, sort of the southeast corner, just off 168, which we have developed as potential economic development opportunity sites. Again, if someone comes in and needs large acreage and you want to be able to provide them an opportunity early in the development of the project, that's a good opportunity that's close to existing roads, has access to utilities and as opposed again to sending them out to the western end or delaying any opportunities because the infrastructure's not in place yet. The central part of the development is largely perceived as, or anticipated to be residential. And the other thing I'll mention in terms of residential, within the core area, which is that area up kind of the north-central part of the site, we're including more medium and high-density residential, which are the products that like to be near the services and retail and entertainment. And, and the opportunity there is to have a walkable environment where you can live in medium-high-density product, housing product, and be able to walk in close proximity to those services. It's also a great opportunity in that core area for potential early catalyst projects, healthcare being one example, which we see around the country now as a, a great early indicator and catalyst for developments like this. Office development, healthcare, maybe even education uses would be great for that area. And then as you move out to the west, we have some industrial sites and of course the big transportation facilities, so the sort of conceptual routing for the east-west connector has a huge benefit to the site, huge benefit to the area. It does create some challenges from a land planning standpoint because it's a limited access road, but overall great access, great visibility for the, for the project. There are stormwater environmental issues, obviously we have to take care of a certain amount of stormwater management, we conceptually are allocating those on the property, so at least we have enough land allocated to deal with those kind of issues, which we're all accustomed to, to implementing and putting into design in this part of the, in this part of the world here. So we just want to make sure those areas are allocated. The one thing about stormwater is it can also be an amenity if they're developed property, properly. And so you can see some large ponds and some small ponds and again, whether those are standing water ponds with normal water elevation or whether they're wetlands, they can be developed as amenities for, for the overall project. This is a conceptual, if you take that approach and the idea of how the land uses work together, what it could look like, sort of a street network, massing, commercial zone, this again closest to 168, the blue office and dust, or office and institutional or healthcare medical center could function very closely again to some high-density or medium-density, density residential. So the residential in this case, if you look at it, you can imagine living there, you'd be able to walk to offices, you'd be able to walk if you worked at, say, a healthcare facility, you could walk to the commercial area. Again, very connected network for pedestrians and automobiles. And then just to the south of that, this will be the, one of the opportunity, economic development opportunity sites. So if someone calls you tomorrow and they've got a need for land, don't have to worry about infrastructure or tell them to come back in the future, you can look at this piece of property and say, "Okay, this could handle one large tenant end user or multiple end users on, on the property of this size." And there's enough room to get it in there and have circulation work, have buffers to residential areas. So it's a good site for an early economic development opportunity. And we'll pass it back to Carol to talk a little about transportation and next steps.
Thanks. And so, and so just one of the things that we looked at, as you could see from the, the network infrastructure that was supporting the development as we worked with the county and the DOT, is figuring out what that roadway network looks like. So we prepared a couple typical sections for just consideration of what those facilities might look like going forward, if it's, you know, Route 168, that, that sort of eastern limit and how the character of that roadway could change in the future, as well as Central Parkway, which was that primary north-south corridor boulevard that would serve the site in the future. But those are the kinds of things that we're taking into consideration and as you'll see on one of the slides going forward is, is when we get to the point of updating that the Unified Development Ordinance to support the master plan, these are the types of things that also get reflected, carried forward for the county to, to paint the picture. And speaking of that, you know, the current land use plan and the code don't necessarily match up, so there's, there's a need there to update a component of the UDO so that it's in place to support not only the land uses, but also the densities that are being proposed in the land use plan so it can go forward and it's, and it's in place. The other thing is updating the land use plan, which is in the process now, the county's land use plan is being updated to ensure that the, the megasite itself and the megasite land use plan or master plan is incorporated or a part of that update. Basically the UDO, as we reviewed it, you know, what we're looking for there is a unified vision between the UDO and the megasite master plan itself to provide, you know, a roadmap, if you will, to development, make it a little bit easier for when folks want to develop and come forward through the entitlement process and for clarity and consistency at the end of the day, makes, makes life a little bit easier. And so out of the, the review that we did, the application of what is the plan development mixed district that's in place, taking that language or that approach and adopting it, modifying it to the megasite, so that becomes a part of the UDO going forward. Next steps, you know, continue the effort to engage the community, coordinate with property owners, potential developers, continue that process. The other thing that we're looking to do is to conduct a public meeting with the Moyac community going forward. So we're trying to schedule that between now and some point in early May at the very latest to get back out with the, with the master plan, get any of that final input. And then also to move forward with the intent of adopting the master plan at the end of the day, which will allow the county and/or others to start to market the plan and about what it is and what it can be and, you know, increasing that level of interest in development, not only in the county but in Moyac in particular as it relates to the site. And then the other important piece is implementing and updating those UDO revisions for consistency purposes. And there's some other items that need to be addressed going forward with transportation as it relates to the transportation network, so that gets, you know, nailed down or a little more clarity as what those improvements might be, utility infrastructure as well as, you know, cost estimates and some different, different funding strategies that might be out there to help with the infrastructure investment going forward. But that's where we are and these are the next steps, you know, as we work with, with Ben and Dan and, and you all, you know, to go forward with the next place, next steps of the master plan and making that become a little bit more reality for the county going forward.
I have a question. Could, could you expand a little bit on why this is important for Currituck County with regards to the level of competition that's out there and when a potential developer or business, when they come in or if they're looking at our area, why is this plan important for success?
Well, what it, what it does, number one, it reflects the effort, the intent, the thought that's gone into, by the county of what your vision is, you know, and also what your expectations are as far as development, future development in and around the county. With, as it relates to the UDO and that code being updated that's consistent with the plan, it also can help with the entitlement process. And as we've talked before, that's one thing developers are looking for and/or property owners are looking for is how to get through that process relatively easily at the end of the day. The other thing that a plan like this does and the clear guidance is it really positions the county to be in a good spot, to have those conversations with developers as far as what the plans are, what the intentions are, an idea of what the cost for potential infrastructure improvements may need to be, and then what those arrangements might be able to be worked out either through incentives for attractiveness or a shared collaborative effort to, to get those investments to take place going forward. But it really helps the county position itself, you know, say have its act together as far as being able to attract development in, in a, in a positive fashion with the intent and goals, which we understand is, you know, bringing, increasing the tax base, bringing employment into, into the county. But it really helps having that plan in place to attract future developers and be, you know, to your point, in a position when they're looking at two other potential locations to be able to put a package together that they can go, go away with and be able to compare apples to apples at the end of the day.
And Mr. Woody can probably expand on this, but this property was identified through the Small Area Plan in Moyac and that, that has a lot to, to come into play with, with why the site was chosen and, and why we're going through this process. Mr. Woody, if you'll expand a little bit on that because of the vision of the Moyac Small Area Plan in the 18, almost 29 months really that we spent on that entire process that this is kind of the fruits of the labor of that process.
That committee identified a need in, in Currituck County, but more specifically in Moyac, to have a, a planned development or an area that could accommodate a planned development with an emphasis on, as Carol mentioned, expanding the tax base and creating some sort of employment opportunity. In particular, the location that was chosen was done so because it's in close proximity to the state line, to the highway, it lines up well with the concept of an east-west connector and it's an area of the county that, that is probably suitable for development, both non-residential or residential, without a lot of impact on existing neighborhoods. So it was really just taking a concept of creating tax base and employment opportunities and then finding the right geographic location for that to occur. And that committee identified that and that plan was adopted and now we're taking the steps to begin to implement that vision.
Thank you.
Any more comments? If I can, Carol and Saul, thanks for doing this the third time today and still making it sound somewhat interesting.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Moving on to new business, board appointments. Item one will be the planning board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to reappoint Jane Everstree.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not in position to, I have that Cameron Taylor is supposed to be replaced on this board, but I'm not understanding if his first term ended in 16, does he have two, three-year terms?
Correct. The Board of, the Board of Adjustment members serve three-year terms and he has fulfilled his second three-year term, so he's up for reappointment.
Thank you.
I do not have anyone to recommend.
Nor I.
Mr. Chair, I thought I may have asked this last meeting, but in case I didn't, I'd like to reappoint Zia Montesi to the Board of Adjustments.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the Recreation Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Rick Vasco to fill that seat on the Rec Advisory Board.
Second.
Second from Ms. Everstree. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. I am not prepared. Moving on to Joint Nursing Home Domincillary Community Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Nancy Kay to serve a one-year term on the Joint Nursing Home Community Advisory Board. She's retired from a occupation in an assisted living facility and I think she'd make a wonderful candidate.
Second that.
Do we need to also appoint the other?
I'm going to in a few minutes.
Okay.
We should do them all together.
Should we do all, should we do all three?
Do them all together.
Do them all together.
I was told we'd do them separate.
Oh, goodness.
I'd like to.
I can't hold on, what's the protocol for that? Like, Mr. McCree? Do we, do we point them all at one time or do we do them separately?
Actually, what you're doing is making a nomination of a slate, so it'd be appropriate to go ahead and name all the nominees and then entertain a motion in a second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'd like to appoint Dolores Brown and Deborah Williams to serve the unexpired term that expires on November the 1st, 2018. Ms. Brown's worked in the health field for about 17 years and Ms. Williams has been involved with a loved one in the nursing home, so I'd like to recommend all three of these.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing, all opposed, I'm sorry. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Number five, Senior Senator Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'd like to nominate or appoint Mary Ellen Maxwell to fill the term that George Rhine was previously serving on the Senior Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda. Motion for approval?
Second.
For approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Commissioner's Report. Mr. Beaumont?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Everstree?
Chairman, I have nothing to say.
Mr. Hall?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. White?
Oh, I'm gonna, big work coming.
Actually, I could, I apologize. Past week I had a chance to work with Mr. Steve Shrago and Robert Miles, who has adopted Tulsa Creek Road as their area to pick up litter on the side of the road. Commissioner Payment and myself were out there, Ms. Gilbert donated some water, she had other obligations. Mr. Scanlon jumped in when we forgot to get the vest, Reggie also out there, so a lot of people, it became a countywide event. Well, in an hour and a half we picked up 11 bags and I'll tell you, you want to see recycling, you know what everybody drinks and eats and those plastic bags are really hard to pick up when they're in the water. So folks, please remember to use your trash recyclables, please. Otherwise, we're out there. Thank you, Robert, thank you, Steve, and the citizens of Currituck that came out there and the brownies and the Girl Scouts that helped us.
Okay.
Mr. White?
All right, I'll leave you on the big word. Myself, the chairman, Commissioner Beaumont and the county manager went and attended a meeting this past week in Raleigh about the bridge and DOT was ready to move forward with it, I'd say by and large. They're, they're definitely moving forward with it and they're, they are, they're excited about what's happening in our region and so that was a great meeting, I came away from it very positive. Then the chairman and I jumped in a car and rode over to Greenville and went to Northeast Alliance, NC East Alliance and attended a seminar on the state of the region. That was very positive and I, and I took several things away from that, so I'm gonna take a few minutes of your time since we haven't had a late meeting tonight.
So for the record, to be clear, you missed the beginning of the game because of Mr. White.
Right. Be quick, be quick. What I came, I came away with several things from it and one of them in particular, several of them impact us and one of those is manufacturing, is an industry that's growing faster in rural areas versus urban areas. And so in light of what we talked about tonight with Kim Lee Horn, it's just right, it just kind of reaffirms where we're at and where we're headed with the Moyac megasite and that we're, we're very well poised to, to have something happen in that area. And it wouldn't have happened without the, the staff, so kudos to them for their efforts and pulling all this together. According to industry polls, a number one problem is skilled labor and we've heard it before, but it, it really just, they said this was the first time they'd seen that as the, as the top issue, is skilled labor. And, and shortly behind that at number 10 was lack of training centers. So again, we're in, we're in a very good area with our efforts at the COA and what's going on there and, and then coupled with that... on there, and then coupled with that, an investment in education is going to be a huge part of our success. Again, and again, and again, throughout the first portion, education just kept coming up, coming up, coming up, as, you know, one of the things you have to have for success in a county. So as we think about that, the school board's asking for more money, and, you know, everybody wants money, but, you know, it's budget time, so just keep that in mind, that education is going to be a key ingredient to our success moving forward. So, in closing, it was just a great meeting, and I appreciate citizens allowing us to go there and participate in it. I learned a lot, especially coming into economic development, we are in the process of hiring a new economic developer, so we're just poised at a very good time as a county to move forward, and it became more clear to me just how much effort the staff puts in, and the hours, and hours, and hours, and meetings, and everything, so thank you for your tireless efforts, and I think that'll do it tonight.
Well done, Mr. White. Ms. Gilbert?
I just want to remind everybody that Sunday starts the beginning of Holy Week, so we have Palm Sunday, there are many community churches that will have services throughout the week, including Lenten services on Wednesdays, their Monday, Thursday services on Thursday, Good Friday, and then finally, the celebration of Easter the following week, so just keep that in mind, and if you're not a regular member at a church, make your presence known, show up, you'll be welcomed.
Mr. Payment?
Mr. Chair, I have nothing at this time, thank you.
I had a lot to say, but Mr. White stole my notes, so I have nothing to say this evening. Moving on to County Manager's Report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and with that, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Second.
Sorry, second. Apologies, second.
The game's the game of the year.
Second.
Mr. Beaumont?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passed. We are now adjourned.